All right, we're on the back finishing.
Counsel agenda, township of Parsippany Troy Hills, regular township council meeting of December 17th, 2019.
Posting of notice, an adequate notice this meeting has been provided in the accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law, by filing the notice in the office of township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 19th, 2018, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the North Star Ledger on December 27th, 2018, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers, local radio stations on December 19th, 2018. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on public access channel 21 at 7:00 PM, Sundays and Wednesdays, and also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Please rise for flexing. Ms. Grignani, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Present.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Kariffi?
Here.
Also present are Mayor Michael Soriano, Township Attorney Jim Lott, Business Administrator Keith Kazmark, CFO Ann Kuchin, Township Clerk Collette Madden, Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, January 7th, 2020 at 6:30 PM, reorganization and agenda meeting. January 21st, 2020, 7:00 PM, regular meeting. Approval of minutes, agenda meeting November 12th, regular meeting November 26th, agenda meeting December 3rd. Motion to approve the minutes above?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, presentations, mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Pay attention to the website, coming up, we have a menorah lighting here in Parsippany Town Hall, where all of the shuls, all of the Jewish temples will be here and represented, unified. And it won't just be people following the Jewish faith, there will be Christians and Muslims here supporting the Jewish community as well. So, I can't recall if that's Sunday the 29th or the 30th, but check the website, I think it's the 30th off the top of my head, okay? So, it'll be great to have everyone here, that's Monday, Monday the 30th. With that said, before I go on with my presentation, I want to wish everyone a very Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas, for those that are celebrating, and return here on January 1st, where we will swear in the council members Paul Kariffi, Loretta Gragnani, and Michael DiPiero at 1 o'clock, or is it noon?
12 o'clock.
12.
Okay, 3:30. At noon, on January 1st, okay, it'll be great to have everyone here. Every now and then I get to do-
Mayor?
Yes.
The menorah lighting is on the 29th.
It is on the 29th, menorah lighting's on the 29th, okay, good, we'll see everyone here for that. And, at this point, the official name is the Aspen Ice Middle School Hockey League Champions. I've been calling them the PAL Hockey League, okay, because this is where a lot of that came from, but it took a lot of work to put this together. It wasn't just the PAL, there were a lot of parents involved in this, volunteers, basically a booster club as well, coaches. Lot of work went into this for its first year, its inaugural year, this is the first year this hockey league ever went as an entity, and in their first year, they won the championship for their division. So, that's something I certainly wanted to recognize here at a special council meeting. I'd like to call up, I don't think everyone's here, but we'll do the best we can, Evan Carlson? Come on up, fast, 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 okay. Anthony Canetta, no, no, stay right here, stay right here, Anthony Canetta? Christopher Dana? Billy Edwards? Parker Enslo? Adam Gasparo? Adam, there you go. Joseph Gasparo? John Gunella? Matthew Hemmenway? Robert Hemmenway?
That was the enforcer?
Yeah, that's it, Jacob McCullough? They call him the Twin Towers, Jacob McCullough, where are you? No, okay, Andrew Nicholas? Hunter Perillo? Domenico Prisco? Delilah Sheffin? William Shoemaker? Come on up, and respects to Max Wright, as well, who couldn't be here. I'd also like to call up the coaches, Coach Sean Lomax, coach? Coach Robert Bussold? Nope, nope, not, okay, Coach Andrew Gasparo? Nope. Coach Christopher Gunella? There you go. Come closer together, everyone. No, you can't. No, the community gets to talk on this later. One more, Frank, real quick. Coach, this is for you, for the team. Certificate of Achievement, the certificate is proudly presented to the Aspen Ice Middle School Hockey Team for your outstanding achievement as the 2019 league champions and winning the Cargo Cup. Congratulations to the Aspen Ice Middle School League Championship Hockey Team on all you've accomplished through your dedication and hard work. Congratulations. All right, team, great to see everybody. Take care. Yes, you can, I'm going to give this to the coach.
They're not here, they're not here.
Oh, you're great, look at you. And to the members of council, my last part of my report, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you, God bless you. Mr. Council President, that concludes my report.
Okay, Township Council, anything from any of the council members?
Right at this time.
Township Attorney, Mr. Lott?
Happy holidays to all.
Thank you. Business Administrator, Mr. Kazmark?
Thank you, Council President, just a lot of year-end things happening in both administration and finance, closing out 2019 and preparing for 2020. We're starting to input preliminary budget numbers for 2020, so as that process progresses, we'll keep the council informed and advised. A number of insurance renewals are on the agenda tonight, if you do have questions about those, Ann or I could try to field them once we get to that portion of the agenda. And other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year to all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Township Clerk, Mr. Madden?
Ah, yes, just very quickly, so this last week, we had Shred It come in and we did a whole destruction for the sewer, for the water and archives, and it's all encompasses all archives, we destroyed about 700-800 boxes. So, from the day that I came in, we hadn't touched the archives for six years, and up until today, probably have about 2,000 boxes destroyed, we're fully up to date on the destruction requests. And at this point, we are now working on implementing the Records Information Management System, which is scanning and in an effort to make this township paper light, we're going to be starting that in, you know, 2020. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Township offices, committees, reports, anything?
Not at this time.
No? Okay. Bits taken, November 7th, Knoll West Country Club system irrigation replacement, to be taken? None, quotations, proposals, qualifications, none? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
The floor is open to the public on any matter.
Okay, if you do come up, please state your name, address, you'll be given five minutes. Okay, see no one come up, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Okay, Mr. DiPiero?
Ordinance for second reading, 2019:69, an ordinance of the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending sewer and water code provisions to clarify the township's intent to assess additional connection fees on previously connected properties on which sewer and water usage materially increases. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on December 5th, 2019. This ordinance was introduced at the November 26th, 2019, regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2019:69, be heard in its second and final reading.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2019:69.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi? Floor is open on this ordinance only. Seeing no one else?
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2019:69.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, I'm sorry, ordinance 2019:70, bond orders providing for the improvements to the water utility in and by the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, appropriating $3 million therefore and authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds or notes of the township to finance the cost thereof. The notice for this ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on December 5th, 2019, this ordinance was introduced at the November 26th, 2019, regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2019:70, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DiPiero, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Public hearing, 2019:70, motion to open the public meeting hearing for ordinance 2019:70.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DiPiero, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only.
See no one come forward, right?
Right.
So, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2019:70.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DiPiero, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Okay, we closed it, right?
Yes.
Okay, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on the final reading and that the notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DiPiero, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2019:71, an ordinance of the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 385 towing of the Code of Parsippany Troy Hills. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on December 5th, 2019. This ordinance was introduced at the November 26th, 2019, regular meeting. Motion to accept that the ordinance, 2019:71, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2019:71.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
See no one come forward, motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2019:71.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
You know, just want to ask one question, in this agreement, it says that the toer can decide on where the car is towed? On what basis do they do that?
Okay, it's consistent with the Predatory Towing Act. We appoint towers here, and they have a variety of yards, and that decision is made by the toer at the time that the vehicle is removed from the street.
Okay, and that goes for, and then the officer can make that decision, or the-
It's not the officer, it's at the discretion of the towing company.
Most often-
I thought there was something about the officer being able to designate the towing-
No, most towing companies have a location they are towed to, either a gas station or a-
Correct.
Maintenance shop.
The officer decides if the vehicle should be towed, all right, but where the vehicle is towed to is up to the towing company.
And that towing company has designated, already designated towing locations?
Correct. That's right.
Most often, it has to do with either location, distance, or it has to do with capacity on the lot, available capacity.
And there's something called the Predatory Towing Act that protects somebody from it being towed to Pennsylvania.
Yeah, right, that's what protects-
Right, that's correct.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, whereas the ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2019:72, ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the county of Morris, authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the redevelopment agreement and amended financial agreement in connection with the redevelopment of Block 200, Lot 1.2 and 1.03 in the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on December 5th, 2019. This ordinance was introduced at the November 26th, 2019, regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2019:72, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. DiPiero, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearing, 2019:71, motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2017:72. I need a second.
Oh, second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes, I have a question here too, this is for the annex of the property?
So, it's for the annexation of the property, because that property, which was formerly in hand over, needs to be basically put under the agreement in the township?
Switching.
Right, as well as, there were some changes in the development proposal by the developer to reduce the square footage in the residential units, the units actually become smaller.
Yeah.
The same number of units have been approved, there's no change in that. The composition of the units has changed, there is a removal from the market rate, units of three bedrooms, and then there's an addition of some amenity space, as well as about 7,000 square feet of office.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only.
See no one come forward. Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2019:72.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. DiPiero, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2019:73, an ordinance of the Township Council, the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 346, snow and ice removal of the Code of Parsippany Troy Hills. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on December 9th, 2019. This ordinance was introduced at the December 3rd, 2019, agenda meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2019:73, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing of ordinance 2019:73.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only. See no one come forward?
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2019:73.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council President, can I just make a comment on that last ordinance?
Yes.
So, what this will do is this will change the township code relative to snow and ice removal, and it will give homeowners and business owners alike 24 hours to remove snow and ice from their properties after the conclusion of the storm. This way, we're not fighting daylight, and there was some verbiage in there about after the ice formed, so it was a little hard from an enforcement standpoint. And in concert with the change to this ordinance, we have a local supplemental violation schedule committee, which Mr. Madden has headed up along with staff at my office. So, the violations relative to that will be presented to you in early 2020, and some of the offenses will then be made payable at the municipal court level without having to appear in municipal court. So, that's an ordinance that we'll visit in early 2020.
Mr. Kazmark, would this have any effect on the summonses that have already been given to the residents?
I'll yield to Mr. Lott on that, but my understanding is that those summonses will be under the current violation schedule until the ordinance is amended, and then once the ordinance is amended, the new progressive fines will go into place at that point.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, one of the complaints that we have received completely from the same person was a $2,500 fine from the shovel lady.
Right.
But Mr. Lott said last meeting that he couldn't find that $2,500 fine on the books anywhere.
So-
That's good news.
So, if I may, the violation schedule as it currently exists could go up to a certain fine, okay? What we're going to be doing with the violations committee review is we're going to be setting specific penalties for first, second, and third offenses in some of these cases, so that it's specific and could be paid by the person who was summoned, rather than having to come to municipal court.
Correct. Under the current ordinance, the fine is imposed by the municipal court judge.
And that is at a penalty maximum of 2,000, would that be changed?
Theoretically, what we're going to present to the council on a number of different infractions would be a progressive first violation, second violation, third violation schedule, so that the number would be set by council ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there some review of that for, like, elderly people?
You'll see the whole violation schedule long before we introduce it.
Okay, great.
I promise.
Thank you. Ordinance 2019:74, an ordinance of the Township Council, of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending the supplemental Chapter 290, Parks, Recreation Areas and Public Lands, Article 1, Motor Vehicle Fees, Section 290-4, Knoll Country Club Utility Fees in Chapter A, 445, Fees, Compilation Section A, 445-37, Knoll Country Club Utility of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey. The notice of this ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on December 9th, 2019. This ordinance was introduced at the December 3rd, 2019, agenda meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2019:74, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearing 2019, colon 74, motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2019, colon 74.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only.
See no one come forward. The motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2019, colon 74.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the public, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading and that the notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And Council President, just on this, I just want to thank Kevin Brancato, who helped tremendously in streamlining and reformatting the fee schedule for the Knoll Country Club. Kevin, look forward to working with you on that. I think this was a great start.
Yeah, I understand he already has an outing planned for tomorrow.
You've got to bring your clothes.
Wear your cleats.
So, the non-consent agenda, Resolution 2019, two, dash, two, three, five, appropriation transfer, motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 2019, dash, two, thirty-six, resolution authorizing the issuance of $305,935 special emergency notes for the payment of contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of employees and by the township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
R. 2019, dash, two, thirty-seven, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing cancellation of the Knoll Golf Utility, 2018 budget appropriation. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 2019, dash, two, three, nine, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing award of a contract to Accra Shore, 1460 Route 9 North, Suite 310, Woodbridge, New Jersey, O7095, for health insurance broker of record services for 2020. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Before I vote, I just want to make note that in talking to a lot of the town employees we have here, they are extremely happy with this insurance broker, so I just want that on the record, and I vote yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 2019, dash, two, forty, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, awarding, authorizing award of a contract to Accra Shore, 1460 Route 9 North, Suite 310, Woodbridge, New Jersey, O7094, for risk management consultant slash liability insurance broker of record services for 2020. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Resolution 2019, dash, two, forty-one, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, awarding contract with Benicard Services, LLC for prescription insurance benefits. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
R. 2019, dash, two, forty-two, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, awarding the contract for medical stop-loss insurance services and medical claim costs for the township's limited self-insured health benefit insurance program. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Ms. McCarthy.
Okay, and who seconded?
Mr. DePiero.
Okay, so Ms., motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 2019, dash, two, four, three, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, awarding contract for employee dental services on a self-insured basis. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 2019, dash, two, four, four, resolution of the Township Council of Parsippany Troy Hills, awarding a contract with UNUM Life Insurance Company of America for employee life insurance benefits. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?